This evening, under new business, this first item is a consideration for the establishment of in-house probation. Ms. Blankenship is here tonight, I believe, to help us through that if we have any questions regarding this issue. This is in your packet, of course. You've had an opportunity to review it. If you would like to quickly go over with us, that would be great.
Yes, sir. What we're asking for at this time is just for council to consider allowing us to move forward with the application process. What we've got to do is reach out to Georgia Department of Community Supervision, the NPU, Miss Mayor Probation Oversight Unit, to gain the approval to be able to create the Newton probation entity in-house. So that's what we're asking for now, is just the blessing to move forward on that application process. That does not mean that we're looking to do that at this time, but we'll have to bring that back before council to get approval to move forward with creating the entity. So right now, we're just looking at the blessing to move forward on getting that application process started.
We need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, that we move forward with the process of establishing an in-house probation. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. The next is a consideration of recommendation for the Downtown Development Authority for engineering services. Ms. Branch, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
I'm fine, thanks.
Would you like a synopsis?
Just a quick.
Brief synopsis, sure.
Yeah, I think it's in our package, so we've all had a chance to review it.
Sure, of course. So a few years ago, the DDA and Main Street engaged in a project to activate the alleyway that we call Wadsworth Alley, which is directly behind Red Night Gourmet, Morgan Jewelers, all those surrounding businesses. We developed it into a green space mini parklet that the public can enjoy. So over the past probably six to eight months, we've noticed that there's some kind of severe stormwater and rain drainage issues that are going on back there. So through the DDA, we engaged with city staff, we met with Public Works, the city engineering department, and then we, from there, engaged with Krebs Engineering, a local law engineering firm, excuse me, and they've come back with this plan for us. This is almost strictly for the water issue. There's not a lot of aesthetics and cosmetics in this work plan, so we're seeking for the city's funding on this project to help with this rainwater drainage issue in this alleyway.
We've had extensive discussions about this alleyway at the DDA meetings over the last several months, and, of course, we quickly kind of realized that the place we need to start to solve the problem is with engineering.
Right.
And that's what the DDA is asking council for approval this evening.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second. Motion, second, we approve the request from the DDA regarding engineering services for Wadsworth Alley. Any discussion?
I have a quick question, since this is kind of a beautification, kind of a area that, it's not necessarily activated by tourists, but hopefully at some point it would be. Would this be something that would be better paid for maybe out from the Nunakaida tourist funds as part of, into the city absorbing that directly?
Mr. Phillips, can we use those funds for this?
Number one, the, yes, there's a little bit of limited fund balance in Hoteemoto Tax because we primarily transfer the majority of our Hoteemoto Tax to the Nunan Center and Explorer Nun in Quehuta. We do have some monies left over that we collected a few years back called for tourism product development. There's limited funds remaining in that account. I don't have the amount off the top of my head, and I would also kind of question whether or not it is a tourism product development eligible category. So at this point in time, I would certainly just recommend keeping with the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those pose, same sign, motion carried, thank you. The next is a consideration of the ordinance to establish a millage rate and imposed taxes for budget year 2023. Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I believe this is pretty straightforward. We have an ordinance in front of you to set the tax rate for 2023. The ordinance in front of you does recommend that we accept the full rollback rate. Since we are proposing the full rollback rate, there was no need for any public hearings. So we're, the ordinance would establish a millage rate of 2.752 meals, and for information, we've been able to take the rollback rate for each of the last five years. Five years ago, our millage rate was four meals flat, and if this ordinance is passed by council, again, the millage rate will be 2.752.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is under unfinished business. Chief, you're up on this, with a proposal to select routes and fees for public requested road races, runs, walks, and similar events with consideration of a maximum cap. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. Last month, we were here, we brought to your attention a request for your consideration in regard to routes that involve runs, walks, and similar events, and deciding, asking your approval for these particular routes. We provided five. Ms. Megan has them showing on the board screen there. First route would be the Link, needing two to three officers. A second route would be the East Washington Street, McIntosh Parkway. It really starts around Salbeedie, that's Route Two, needs 16 officers for that 5K, the next route. Is the Square Buchanan and Fifth, Connor, around the high school and back to La Grange. That's 21 officers, three hours for that route. The next route is the one that heads north around Temple Avenue, Clark, Sherwood Drive. That's 22 officers for that route. And the last route, number five, is Greenville Street, Nimmans, La Grange, and that route takes 21 officers also. So currently, four of those five routes we use. Currently, they're being used by groups, entities here in our city to have their events. The only one that's not currently used is the Link, which was proposed up there as an option. I provided last meeting an option of fees. You can see those fees are also in your packet, that would be option number one. Those fees were determined based on the impact of those streets, that area of the city. That's why those fees were chosen in that way, and also involving 5K, 10K, and so forth, and the impact they would have on specific neighborhoods. So that's why you see that. Option two and option three, which the council asked us to look at, option two is a 40-hour dollar-per-hour rate for the officers that's needed to work that event. That currently, if you take our staff, that's an average of what our current time-and-a-half salary would be at an officer. Option three is a $45-per-hour rate, which is currently what a private entity would hire an officer to do a part-time or extra-duty job. So we are asking council to consider these routes for approval for these type of events, and consider, have consideration of a cap max per event excluding maybe the Link, which could be larger. That's what we're asking from council.
Questions? Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do you approve the routes? Because you've got to decide on the fee, too.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask the question.
Let's approve the routes first, okay? I think that's be the way to do it personally. Yeah.
Approve the routes with the cap. As per recommendation from staff with a cap of two events, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's my motion, for the routes to be approved as stated in our packet.
Okay, so let me just make sure, do I have a second? Second. Okay, a motion and a second. Make sure everybody understands we're doing this in parts.
Yep.
The first part is to approve the routes that we're presenting. The only question I have, at Nunan High School, is that up the hill or down the hill?
Depends on which end you start.
Okay, good. All right, so any other questions on this? Everybody understands what we're doing?
So it's strictly the routes this time?
Just the routes. I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. All right, the second part is the fee structure. Questions on the fee structure?
On the fee structure, you're looking for guidance from us to be able to tell you, we choose either option one, two, or three, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, all right, so now that I understand that, I would like to make a motion that we choose option three.
Second.
Motion and second, that we approve option three as presented by the chief this evening on the fee structure. Any discussion?
Actually, I'm having a little heartburn about going with the highest option, because we've had some of these races that have come through our community and been part of what makes Nunan Nunan for quite some time. And then to go in, especially those that have traditional, you know, the 10K and the 5K that are along this route, charge them the absolute highest we got on the list, I think that's a bit much, because we're not in this to try to make money off of it, certainly. We're not gonna, I don't think we're going to cover every single cost that we have in this thing with charging the highest amount that's on the options. I think that there is some community benefit, and a lot of community benefit, from some of these things that we, these races that we have coming through our community. You know, I'm not saying that we need to give everybody everything away, because our chief has presented a very compelling reason as to why we need to do some sort of charge. But I am not in favor of doing option three. I would prefer a more scaled-back version of that, even option one, where our link is more used, because I think that these are fundraisers, these are things that are going to end up benefiting our community in the long run, in the short term. And to not give a free option here, I think, is shortsighted and might deter some of these community events from happening to benefit our community.
I think it's important to remember, these are just options. We can come up with our own option. We don't have to go with any of these. These are just kind of numbers that he came up with in order to recoup the true cost to the police department, to the taxpayers. I mean, we could have options four, five, and six. I mean, option four could be no charge for anything and keep it as it is. And so I think it's important to remember, though, that, and to chief's point in the last meeting, the police department is peculiar among all the staff, that they face certain issues that no other parts of the government faces, higher divorce, higher, you know, family issues, health issues, divorce, suicide, that kind of stuff. And so I think it's important that we do balance this with taking their care into account. I mean, we pride ourselves as a city that we take care of each other. We're kind of like a family, and that's not taking care of our family if we're leaving them out to dry. So I don't think we need to be going with a free option either, and I don't know if you're necessarily advocating a free option on everything, or the option one.
Option one is what I'm advocating for, because there is at least one free option that has the least amount of manpower, and the rest of it does charge, so we do have in place with, and this is also their original proposal.
Well, you could also take the link as, because there are only, it's only two to three officers, as free across the board, and free in option two and free in option three. And that would allow you to, and that would allow you to pick option three at the same time, you're giving a free option to those people in the community who were fundraising.
Well, I ran in the first Labor Day weekend race, we had, actually had it on Friday, and then from then on, we had it Saturday, and for years, I was in charge, maybe 10. And at most, we would get a police car to lead us in the path, there would be no policeman anywhere. And now, if you go through and there's barricades and there's requirements because of traffic, and we've got to do this, and we've got, and I think we shouldn't give it away, because it's an expense on us, and not everybody's using that. So I think it's important that we could do, or get compensated for some of the expenses, because people, they use them as fundraisers, yes, and I understand all that, but they still, and it's expense to the city.
But we also.
But also the cost of the procure.
You give the free option, that makes sense, because that gives them the link, and they can go, and it's clear, and it's a nice place to run.
But we also have to look at the safety of it, that when we use these other routes, it costs money. And we have these police officers out there with the vehicles, and we have to pay to utilize those, and it's a safety issue that we're trying to protect everybody, so.
Also with option number three, gives us the ability, actually, the police department, the ability to absorb future costs, because those costs are not going to go down, if I would be, that would probably be safe to say, would it be? So we're starting out in an option that covers you as we progress in the years ahead. And it would be safe to say that we could have you at a year and a half out, or two years out, say, this is what we're finding, this is what we found, give us a report regarding, hey, this has worked really very well, this is not covering our costs, this is what may be needed in the future, a projection. So we have some options, I think more options with number three. I do like the mayor's idea with free across the board, so.
I do have a motion and a second on the floor, so I need to dispense with that by calling a vote. I'll, go ahead?
Right, just one quick, since we already voted on the routes and the cap, right? Was there a cap included in that last motion?
Not really. I mean, I didn't have a cap.
Okay, so there was no cap in the motion?
I just managed the route straight, and the dollars come after.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because if we do open up the link as, say, a free option, that may increase the number on there, and that the cap then would be nullified.
That's correct.
But if they had one a weekend, it wouldn't be, I mean, a major problem, I wouldn't think. If you had, if you had one every weekend for 20 weekends, I mean, there's three officers, it's not the burden that you have elsewhere.
Right.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's not, likely not happening. But, good. Okay, so I have a motion and a second on the option three only.
Mr. Mayor, not to interrupt, but when would the effective date be?
First of the year?
Right, I mean.
Just to clarify.
And anything that's on the books already for next year is grandfathered, if everyone would agree to that.
One thing, too, on the, on the, number three, are we going to make the link free, take that dollar figure off the link and make it totally free?
That, I've, I've got the motion to just adopt option three, so.
Unless you want to make a friendly amendment to your motion.
Yeah, it's Paul's motion, but yes, that's fine to me. And you're of option three motion, so if we amend that to take the link totally free?
In option three?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I will amend it to, for to include the link free.
Okay, so I have amended motion, which is option three, but the link for free, correct? Yes. All right, any more questions, discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Motion carried, thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
All right, the next item on the agenda, page two, consideration of subdivision plat for real property located at 66 First Avenue and 10 Buchanan. Mr. Phillips?
Absolutely, let me get to my spot here in the agenda.
While he's getting there, I will tell you that Mr. Phillips and I met with the homeowners that you see on the plat there, and we had a civil and robust discussion regarding these properties and the division of the properties. And Mr. Phillips has placed in your agenda some drawings with lines in blue and red hash marks that indicate what we thought was the decision that came out of that. What he's going to present to you tonight is what we will in turn present back to the property owners for their approval or not, and as owners of this property, we'll make a decision based on that. So, Mr. Phillips?
Absolutely, that's a very correct synopsis of the excellent meeting that we had. Megan, can you go to the other slide for me real quick, please? All right, it's kind of hard to, the colors aren't showing up as well as I would like in that particular slide, but I want to first start with talking about the larger lot, the lot on First Avenue that we've been referring to, 66 First Avenue. I think we come up with a really good logical division plan of there, that makes a lot of sense when you look at the existing lot lines. Basically, and we don't have exact dimensions, if we get approval tonight, the next step would actually to get a surveyor, and we have a surveyor ready to go, that would actually, there, I've got my pointer, that would actually tell us the exact dimensions, and that way we can then prorate the cost later. But basically, what we're doing on 66 is, basically, half of the lot would be offered to Ms. Vines. It's a logical split. It would actually allow her driveway, which has been on 66 via an easement for years, to actually be on her piece of property. And then the other three lots that actually, front on Buchanan, would have their rear lot lines extended. Again, it's just a very logical, nothing irregular about it. Coming over to the water tank lot, it was a little bit more difficult. I think we finally got to a resolution, and I think the one thing that maybe helped us get to a resolution is the fact that the city, at least in our meeting, I need authorization to do such tonight, we've agreed to demo the concrete pad. I think the concrete pad has been some of the source of contention because of the elevation that it creates. And by removing the concrete pad, it actually makes the lot actually divisible. You can divide it, because you don't have the big concrete pad in the middle. So by doing such, we actually took the same logic that we took when looking at 66 First Avenue, that if you kind of look at the continuation of lot lines from the property coming back from Mr. Cole and the property coming back from Mr. Paul, Ms. Paul, that it's logical just to continue that lot line, basically, straight on that same plane. Same thing, it creates lot lines that are consistent with adjoining properties. I think it's the best plan that we have. In doing so, there were some other agreements. There's a hashed area right here that Ms. Vine, via her attorney, is currently filing a petition for quiet title on that particular piece. We actually got service on that yesterday, but that left another small portion right here, that there was an agreement in the meeting that, that Mr. Cole would not object to Ms. Vines doing that if there was no objection to this division. I think all of that makes perfect sense. I think that's the option we want to present to council. Honestly, I don't see another way to logically divide this. So with the approval, I would proceed again with the actual survey. Mr. Sears, we would have all the closing documents prepared, we would reach out to the adjoining property owners for that closing. Obviously, I've got a little work to do to remove the water tank, or the concrete pad. And as far as cost, what I would like to do, we offer this piece at a minimum, or what we said in our last agenda packet, was at $10,000. So once we get the square footage of each parcel, we would simply just prorate that, divide it up, with adding some of the closing and survey cost. I don't have those exact costs, they would be determined at closing. This water tank lot, $2,500, again, prorate it based upon the survey and the additional fees for the survey and closing. So that's the proposal that we would recommend, Mayor, council.
So just a quick question for clarification. All costs would be basically passed on to the homeowners, except for the demolition of the pad?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions on this?
One thing, too, what about the pipes that are underneath some of that?
Are you referring to the pipes that are?
That pad, there was a pipe that went down that driveway.
Yes, yes, that pipe hasn't been utilized. I think we would be doing more damage to the property trying to remove it than we would leaving it.
As long as they know it's there.
Yes.
One other quick question for you. The bottom left corner of that hash mark, it looks like it kind of takes a little jog down across the fence line into the property of 81, but giving it to 68. Am I seeing that correctly, or is that just hard to see in the picture?
Yeah, I think what you're seeing in the picture is hard to explain. It's pretty straight.
It's hard to see with the shadowing also, so.
Yeah, it certainly is. That's simply just an aerial image, it's not, it's not a survey representation. It's, which page are you at on your packet, and maybe I can help?
38.
If you look at that picture down the bottom left, just the hash mark, it just looked like it's going over into the, over the fence line.
38.
Okay. There's no page number.
Eptah, on your screen.
Okay, if you'll identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ben Mentor with the Furman Taylor English Doma. Representative Ms. Vines has spoke with you, or before you, several months ago, to address the specific issue you just raised, councilman. The quiet title action actually takes that into account, and so the quiet title action is not a straight, it is not a straight line, it actually curves to account for the fence. So she's not claiming any part of the fence that's currently on the Paul's property, that's their property. It's not to the south, it's really to the east.
Okay, yeah, it's kind of hard to tell, so, thank you.
Yes, sir. And I just wanted to address the council briefly to express what Ms. Vines' views were on this. She, she accepts the proposal. It's not the proposal that came out of the August 3 meeting, but nonetheless, it is one that she's agreeable to, provided that the one section, the eastern section of that alleyway, would be quit claimed to her by the only property owners who really might have a claim to that, which would be, I believe, the Coles, I think they reside at 12 Buchanan, and the Pauls, I'm not sure what their address is, but they were on the south, well, it would be the, on that, it'd be the lower southwest, but by the map, it'd actually be the east by southwest, or, excuse me, east by southeast portion. Her quiet title action, being filed before this division of property, is only for the section of the alley that is exactly east of 68 First Avenue, which is her property. So she has not yet claimed that portion of the alley. On your maps and your agenda packet, there's a little dotted line that bisects 10 Buchanan, and that line, if you take it all the way up, and it then dissects, or bisects, the pink rectangle, then you've got, to the left of that dotted line is the portion that's encompassed in her quiet title action, to the right of the dotted line is sort of a no man's land. It's, the city has never taken an affirmative stance on it owning the alleyway. I don't believe that anyone's claimed that portion. To the extent that the other property owners are agreeable to quit claiming that section of the alley, and basically affirming what the city's proposal is, Ms. Vines agrees. Ms. Vines is also happy to let the city use her driveway to access 10 Buchanan to demo that, that pad, provided the city repair any damage done to her driveway for that. I have not heard directly from the Pauls as to their stance on this. I understand through the city manager before the meeting that they were in agreement. Mr. Cole sent an email, it was his counsel, Mr. Sears were copied on, saying that he agrees to it. I hope you can understand that as a lawyer, I tend to like to see things in writing. Also, as the city manager said, that there is some additional survey work that would be done. So I'd suggest, I think, of course, you're going to listen to what your attorney would advise, you can propose this now, you may still need to come back later. I suggest, as unpalatable as it may be, to table for one more meeting, just to allow for the additional survey work to be done, for Mr. Cole's attorney and the Paul's attorney and I, just to paper anything that needs to be done as to quit claiming that one little section of alleyway, so that then a complete agreement comes before you for execution in the future with no more fuss. But that's in your discretion. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So I have a quick question. For that one portion you're asking for quit claim, and maybe this was under the city, she'd be willing to pay her portion for that?
Well, who, to whom would she pay? Because the city.
Well, the city owns that part of the pink hash that you're referring to. If I followed all you were saying, that pink hash to the right of the red dash line, that's what you're asking the city to quit claim and give to her?
I don't think.
That's not what he's asking. Mr. Phillips?
No, that is not correct.
Okay.
Yeah, by basically saying, he's asking the Coles and the Pauls to quit claim, basically what he's asking them to do is not to object, is basically what he's asking for, in simple terms.
A quit claim just makes it quicker.
Yeah.
I mean, to the extent she has a quiet title action, and that has to play out in courts, a quit, quiet title.
Cheaper.
Yes, a quit claim deed is just faster, helps the process finish.
And I appreciate your suggestion, Mr. Mentor, but what I'd like to see us do tonight is move forward with the proposal, put it, as you said, in writing, so that everybody can see exactly what it is, put it out in front of all the interested parties, affected parties, and then, as you also said, it's got to come back to us, for us to ratify any change that might be made to it. So, I mean, this was, was a good meeting that we had, I think we, everybody's done some really good work here in good faith. I think we've, everybody's done some really good work here in good faith. And I'd like to see us not put it off and move forward with, with the proposal. Yes, sir, if you'll come forward and state your name, please.
Hey, my name's Luke Paul, my wife Paige Paul. We live at eighty-one Lagrange Street. I appreciate you guys allowing me a time to talk here. Unfortunately, this is really the first we've heard of all this going on. Mr. Haskell reached out to me late last week and kind of brought us up to speed, but we didn't attend the meeting, we don't have an attorney involved. As you guys can see, I actually placed a fence up just to really avoid the entire situation probably about six months ago. And really, me and my wife just want to, you know, move forward. So this raises concern tonight with the pink dotted line. Maybe I was misunderstanding, but to my understanding now, is, is my fence essentially on the city alleyway? Is that what we're saying here? Because I got the property surveyed about eighteen months ago.
I don't, I don't think we can answer that question.
Well, from the drawing.
Well.
Well, the drawing is an aerial photography.
It's an aerial.
Yeah, there's a significant margin of area, of area in a, in the imagery and the angle of the airplane. I don't want to get too technical, but that is nowhere near a survey drawing. I believe the, the complete intent is for it not to include your fence. And I think Mr. Mentor said that that quiet title action did not include your fence, so.
Sure.
That's true, and I'm happy to speak with you at the meeting about that.
Sure, thank you. Okay, just, you know, before we sign anything or agree to any quiet title or quit claims, and we got, you know, a notebook of papers prior to coming here about five minutes before we showed up, I would just like to make sure everything's clear, since we don't have an attorney involved, it's just my wife and I.
You will absolutely have that option.
And any, you know, meetings and conversations moving forward is, if we can be added to the agenda. I appreciate it.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, no, no doubt about it. That's the reason we want to go ahead and, I, I would like to go ahead and pursue and go, go ahead and get a motion to approve this tonight so that we can get it all on a piece of paper, surveyed. So everybody sees exactly what it is, there's no questions, there's no, you know, there's no going back. Everybody agrees to it, sign off on it if they agree to it, and we're on the way.
One thousand percent, I'm in agreeance with you there, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second to approve the proposal as presented for sixty-six First Avenue and Tin Buchanan Street. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried, thank you. The next item, and thank you, everybody, for their hard work on this and consideration and patience. The next item is a consideration to place a city-owned lot at twenty-eight West Gate Park Lane under surplus and to open up the lot for, for bid, for auction. Mr. Moody, how are you this evening?
I'm doing great, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel, for allowing me to be back before you. The item before you was on the agenda for the evening meeting in July, and the council requested that we reconsider this and bring it to the evening meeting for tonight. So it's back before you for your consideration to place this lot under surplus to, at a later date, be auctioned if the council searches.
Right, and we also ask you to reach out to Habitat and the Housing Authority to get their, their desire to buy the lot and.
Correct, so we, we spoke with both the Housing Authority and Habitat. Both have indicated that they are not going to be able to build a home, an affordable housing unit within a year. Habitat specifically within a year. Housing Authority is looking at more to five to seven years due to ongoing projects as the Housing Authority has approximately five or so NSP projects as well as ARPA projects.
Right.
And then Habitat is also finishing up two more NSP and ARPA homes.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion on the issue?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We place the city-owned lot at twenty-eight West Gate Park Lane under surplus and open up the lot to auction. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I will just reiterate that when we purchased this lot, it was for the intent, of course, one, to curb some activity that was going on in the community that was detrimental to the community, with the second intent of making sure that we provided affordable homeownership opportunities in that community. And the intent had been to work with our organizations to do so. Then we ended up tearing it down, thinking that that would help with some of the issues that we were encountering with now more issues. But I think that moving forward with selling this lot on the market to whoever wants to, to buy it is going to be very counterproductive to that end goal of us creating more affordable housing opportunities. I think that the beauty of it being a vacant lot right now is that there is nothing other than the lawn to maintain. And if we wanted to include it in a fence, I really don't think that fencing that lot off would be too much until we are able to, to get our organizations that do that kind of work the opportunity. I think making a year, squeezing that down to a year, just, I, I think it's arbitrary. I don't think there's any urgency about us building it. There is urgency to create, to, to keep people from parking on it and partying and whatever they're doing over there. But to just sell it off, I ju- I just don't think it's, it's looking at the future of workforce housing and affordable housing in our community. This neighborhood was initially built in the seventies, eighties, something like that to, for affordable homeownership opportunities. And right now, with the prices the way they are in the market, the way that it is, it may be that catalyst for gentrifying that neighborhood, which would then take away the opportunity for affordable housing to continue to be in our community. So I, I think I know where this is going to fall, but I have to say that I, I do object to it. I think that we should save this piece of property for the intent that we purchased it for and to think more about workforce housing in our community. And land is the biggest obstacle to affordable housing. And we've got a piece of land. Let's not give it up right now just because we don't want to maintain it anymore, we don't want to put up a fence or whatever it takes to make the neighbors in the neighborhood feel more safe with this piece of property while we wait to develop it at the right time with the intent of creating homeowner, homeownership opportunities for our citizens.
Mr. Phillips, could, we have done, we've gone through the process several years ago of deciding which surplus lots to sell. This, this lot was not available to us at that time.
At that particular time, it was not on that list.
But, but we also kept, if you'll refresh our memory, on how many lots do we have that are available to build on?
Mr. Smith and Mr. Dunbar may know that better, but yeah, we did keep several lots that we did keep them back for, for, for housing purposes, specifically future Nura projects. So we did have a list. I don't know the exact number, Mr. Smith, do you, do you recall?
That's after we tried to auction off a whole bunch, a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, that was done prior to the auction, but there were probably twenty-five, thirty lots, maybe, that we set aside or decided to set aside for future city projects. There was a number of them, about that many.
And Mr. Moody, at the current rate that Nura is building projects,
if, if we had to estimate.
What's the absorption rate of twenty-five to thirty lots?
Yeah, so we're looking at five to seven years for output on a house, just given the sheer number of homes we plan to build in the next five to seven years, which is sitting at approximately twenty-one. And if I, I may also add too, the original consideration was also intended to include taking the proceeds of the sale of the lot if council approved and returning that to Nura for the purpose of using on additional housing units. And if you'll recall from the memo, we noted that the Hundred East Washington project has also been partly put on hold due to a budget shortfall.
Correct, Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, one, one other thing I think we can keep in mind. If you recall, the, the reason this particular item made it to the agenda is because the adjoining property owner actually made a request for consideration to surplus that that particular adjoining property owner had the desire to acquire for a larger lot. Now, obviously, when it goes to a public bid, there's no guarantee that particular individual will be get the property. But we have at times when we've gone to, if you decide to go to a, a public auction or bid, we have in the past put restrictions on lots for future use. I did reach out to the adjoining property owner, told him it was on the night's agenda. I don't know if anyone's present tonight, but that was the original reason that it was, it was placed on the agenda.
Okay, so I have a motion is second, any other questions or discussion?
Do they want, I guess the question is, do you want to put restrictions on it?
Who made the motion?
Yes.
And just say generally, if we go to the auction process, we will set a minimum bid and we will put in the ad that runs in the paper what restrictions council has requested be placed on the lot. Because that does affect some of the bidding process on someone bidding on a lot. And obviously, if you want to maximize the money, you set a high, higher fee that you would accept. Of course, you can weigh that, but you can set, set the higher fee and put no restrictions on it. And then that does not limit what somebody could do for the lot in the long term.
Other than zoning.
Yeah, so that, that would be my recommendation is give staff direction if you want to put such restrictions on it. Otherwise, it would be so just free and clear.
What restrictions have we put in the past?
We've went as far as say that no living structure can be built on a property. But when you, when you do that, you've really decreased the value of the property to where it is at that point in time only really desirable to the adjoining property owners. You could go to the point to likely set a, a housing size restriction. So if someone were to buy it, you couldn't build a house of X small or X large. I mean, there's a variety of options that you would have available. But we haven't been as restrictive as no living structure, only if such.
We've also placed no rental restrictions on property. Is that correct?
No, no.
No, we have not?
No, because we, the restrictions we've placed on, you can't build a livable unit on it anyway.
With my motion, I, I'd have to yield to staff to get their recommendation, what they feel. I mean, right, right off the bat, I.
Free and clear sounds good to me.
What's that?
Just selling it free and clear.
With no restrictions? That seems to make sense to me.
And I could appre- I could appreciate her, her concern about, you know, that she's raised. However, ba- basically, looking at the backlog of both your other housing organizations, they don't have the wherewithal at this point. So I think using these funds to be able to pump into those, to get those moving, would be more beneficial to producing affordable housing in a more timely manner, other than waiting years. So if we can get this in the market and sell it and, you know, use that money.
Well, keep in mind, there are restrictions already on it. Your zoning restrictions would take a place.
No additional.
No.
I'll make that motion of no restrictions.
No additional.
Okay, so I had a motion in a second. The motion didn't include any restrictions to begin with, so it stands as no restriction. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign.
Nay.
Motion carried. The next is a public hearing that may take a bit. So I'm going to move down to visitors and ask this, for this request from RPM to close Madison Street on September seventeenth for a fundraising event to be considered so that if that person does not want to stay here and watch us go through a rezoning, they might not have to do that.
We really appreciate that, sir, thank you so much. My name is Anna Elizabeth Nix, I'm with Tales of Hope. We are a five oh one C three service dog organization. And we are joining RPM to do a fundraiser on the seventeenth.
Any questions of the applicant regarding this? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Chiefs here, I'll ask any issues here that we need to discuss regarding this. Okay, Mr. Alexander?
What is the time that this, this is going to be?
One to six P M.
One to six, okay.
Okay. Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Let's move back up on the agenda now. There's a public hearing for rezoning request, RZ twenty twenty-three oh two by LDO Caleta LLC. Thirty-five point four nine acres located at twenty thirty-seven Noonan Crossing Bypass. Tax parcel zero eight seven five zero one one zero zero three. This is a request zoning from RS fifteen suburban residential, single-family dwelling district, medium density to RMH residential medium family dwelling, higher density for the purpose of construction of a hundred and sixty-three town home development. This is fee simple, correct?
That is correct.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time and ask Mr. Smith for his report.
Thank you kindly, Mayor, Counsel, good evening. First of all, I want to thank you all for your time and attention at the August eighth work session where we dived into this project a little bit more deeply than we maybe we can this evening. But real quickly, just to give you kind of the synopsis of what is being presented to you this evening. As the mayor mentioned, the total site is thirty-five point four nine acres. When you remove some of the natural features, topography, some of the easements, you're looking at maybe twenty acres, give or take, of developable area. And the proposal is to put a hundred and sixty-three town home neighborhood in that particular piece of property. The gross density is at four point six units per acre. The net density is roughly eight units an acre, which is allowable under the RMH zoning for townhomes. For the benefit of the audience and for those watching online, the full text of the report is available on our website. We won't be going into all that detail, but just very quickly, I want to go over the standards that we use when evaluating any rezoning or annexation. There are eight different standards, and I will tell you that we found this particular petition meets six of those eight standards. Very quickly, we'll go through those. Is the proposed use suitable in view of the zoning and development of the adjacent nearby property? Staff believe that it is. This is an area marked as an emerging missing middle on the city's future land use map, which you may recall was a result of a long-term effort that involved staff, the public, and this body in approving our comprehensive plan and our future land use map. That particular classification includes single-family detached, attached residential dwelling options, cottage homes, as well as multifamily apartments. Number second standard is will this use adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property? The particular issue that we come across when doing the impact assessment with our various providers is traffic. The number of anticipated trips is one thousand one hundred ninety-two based on the traffic information that's been provided. This is less than the other two previous rezoning attempts that came before you. We do not believe, and our engineering director of engineering services, Mike Clark, and I've spoken about this earlier, we do not believe that it will have a dire impact on the major corridor, which is Noonan Crossing Bypass. Are there substantial reasons why the property cannot or should not be used as currently zoned? Well, the answer to that is no. There aren't any substantial reasons. The fact is that nobody has brought you a development option under the current zoning. Doesn't mean that it can't be developed under the current zoning. So it does not meet that particular standard. Will the proposed use cause an excessive or burdensome use of public facilities or services included, but not limited to streets, schools, water or sewer utilities, and police or fire protection? It will have an impact on service providers, there's no doubt about that. The school system has concerns about their ability to meet the projected residential population, and both fire and police indicate that while they foresee being able to meet the demand for the future service, that there will be a strain on personnel and equipment resources. So this particular standard is not met. Is the proposed use compatible with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan? We say that it is. The future land use plan shows the property is appropriate for development between four to seven units per acre. This will be going to eight units an acre, but it's still within the gross development of four point six. Is the proposed unit consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning district? The RMH is designed to provide a higher-density town home development. They are typically located appropriately in transition areas between denser residential developments and commercial developments. To the north of the subject site, you have the Springs at Noonan, which is an apartment complex with a future commercial tract which is yet to be developed. To the south is county property, which includes a self-storage facility and a proposed car dealership. So it is, in terms of looking at the intent of this district, a transition area that is suitable for the RMH designation. Is the proposed use supported by new or changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? We believe that it is. The future land uses illustrate the subject site as emerging missing middle residential. And updates to the future land use map and comprehensive plan show this proposed development as a use consistent with that classification. Does the proposed use reflect a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety? Does the proposed use reflect a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, or general welfare, and the right to unrestricted use of the property? We believe that it does. The city has approved several townhouse developments in the last five years. You see several of those under construction at this time. The majority of those are market rate real developments. This proposed development would fall in the market rate category. This site is limited, as I mentioned earlier, by several natural features, topography, streams, and floodplain that restrict development. As the need for more housing opportunities continue to emerge, this is an area that has been identified by this body and the public and staff as an area suitable for higher residential development. In conclusion, as I mentioned, we found that it meets six of the eight standards. As we've talked about earlier in the work session and with the planning commission, there was a preliminary tree management plan. Our city landscape architect did review it. He has made some comments that he knows that even though it's not the final approved landscape plan, there were some concerns about some additional details that would be needed in fleshing this out for a full development. But he did applaud them for taking care of staying out of the wetlands, maintaining a healthy buffer between I-85 and the development, which has been consistent with this corridor, which we've tried to maintain, and that they would stay away from encroaching any of the trees in the wetland area. Just as a reminder, back in July, the planning commission held a public hearing. They recommended approval of the rezoning by a three-to-one vote. And as you recall, we just mentioned the August 8th work session was held where you had an opportunity to discuss it. After the conclusion of that work session, along with some recommendations of planning commission, we have suggested 12 conditions, and we have presented those conditions to the applicant, and they have stated they're in agreement with those conditions. They're listed in your report, but with your indulgence, I had to briefly go over them for the purpose of entering into the record and for the benefit of the audience. Those conditions will be that the project will be consistent with the density, project data, amenities, proffered conditions, and architectural details, as provided as part of the application. The project will be capped at 163 townhome units maximum. The developer will maintain at least a 40-foot undisturbed landscape buffer on the east side between any residential unit and Interstate 85 right-of-way. The developer will provide and install any required street lining along Unit Crossing Bypass adjacent to the parcel, and will install sidewalk along Unit Crossing Bypass and internally through the development. Fifty percent of the townhouse units will have vehicular access from a rear access garage from an alley. These units will be 20 feet wide with 1,750 square feet minimum heated living space. Rear access garages will be a minimum of 19 feet from the edge of pavement to the alley, or to the garage, rather. A minimum 10-foot front setback for all townhouse buildings with rear driveway access. Fifty percent of townhouses will have vehicular access from a front garage. These units will be 28 feet wide. Garages will be set a minimum of 19 feet from the sidewalk. A minimum 10-foot setback on all units with front driveway access. All driveways must be a minimum of 19 feet from the sidewalk to the garage. All garages must be a minimum of 19 feet from the sidewalk for front access garages and for rear access garages, 19 feet from the edge of pavement of the rear alley. A minimum 10-foot street-side setback for each block or row of townhome units as shown on the concept plan. No more than 10% of the townhouse units in the total development may be rental units, or no more than 16 townhouse units can be rental units. End wall and rear wall elevations for all townhouse units in that portion of the development in proximity to the entrances from Unit Crossing Bypass will receive the same treatment as the front elevations, meaning architectural treatments, on those units with high visibility as shown and depicted on the concept plan. That is the staff report we have at this time, and I'll conclude my remarks. And if you have any questions of me, if not, the applicant's available.
Any questions to staff?
How many units did you say that you could build just as it is right now?
Just two and a half units per acre, over 20 acres. What's that, 40-something houses, I think?
Two and a half times 20 is.
What's that?
Fifty.
Fifty, thank you. You're better at that than I.
Okay, any other questions, staff?
I have a quick question for you. We talked about the buffer on the 85 side, the east side of the block. What about on the west side with Noonan Crossing Bypass there? Some of those lots look like they're fairly close. I mean, I don't want any.
There'll be a setback, a building setback that you'll have, along with a landscape strip in front, but there won't be as deep of a setback. Well, for one thing, the streams and the wetlands give you that healthy setback.
I'm not going to mention the north side, but I'm saying the west side along the bypass.
Right.
Some of those are fairly, pretty close to the road, and just a lot of road noise from there. As development goes on down there, it's going to get more.
It would just be subject to whatever the setbacks are for that particular zoning designation along with any landscape strips that are required along the road frontage.
So, Mr. Smith, the streets inside this development would be city streets?
That's my understanding.
The alleyways, though?
Would be private.
Private alleyways to be taken care of by the HOA?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions, staff? Okay, this is the opportunity for the applicant to come forward and speak. We have rules regarding the time limits. The applicant has 15 minutes, as do anyone here that would be opposed to the application. So if Mr. Ferry will come forward, state your name for the record, please. And I guess keep in mind, maybe that we did have a work session on this, so.
Thank you. This also, this also, would you move the slides?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, great. Hi. Thank you all. My name is Richard Ferry. I'm with LDO Caleta LLC. Excuse me, and I'm here to present the project on Unit Crossing Bypass. As I, as staff pointed out, first of all, thank you all. I did enjoy the workshop. That was a nice exchange, and also the time with the planning commission was appreciated also. So got some good information, some good dialogue, and I appreciate that very much. So again, my name is Richard Ferry. I'm with LDO Caleta LLC. Our request is to zone 35.46, 486 acres from currently RS 15 to RMH for the purpose of developing and constructing 163 townhomes. The property is currently owned by the Cates Family Partnership, and they signed all the necessary application forms to allow us to make this application and agree to the terms if we are successful in the rezoning. The property is located on the southern, whoops, sorry, wrong line. Is located on the southern property line, or the southern property, or the southern city limits of Noonan. That's our property line here. We're adjacent to unincorporated Caleta here on the Noonan Crossing Bypass. We have about 930 linear feet of frontage on the bypass, and we also have quite a bit of frontage on Interstate 85. Across from our property is the Lake Shore, is an entrance to Lake Shore Parkway. And adjacent to us to the north is the Springs of Noonan. As staff pointed out, we are encumbered by some of the items on the property, and those would include the red line here shown as, that's a power line that runs through the property. And we have a pretty significant creek that flows north-south through the property. And so that does, it does limit our spacing and does pinch our ability to use the full extent of the property. Where do I point it at? There we go. So here's the layout of the project. As I mentioned, it's 163 townhomes. The front-loaded product is 79 of those, 163. The rear-loaded is 84. Some of our requests are, as staff pointed out, 20-foot wide lots that are rear-loaded, and those will be rear-loaded from alleyways. And those have a minimum lot size, a minimum lot size of 1,750 square feet. And then, and then we have 10-foot front and side street setbacks. So that, staff brought those up. I think one of the things I really wanted to point out in this is that our goal here is to do a fee simple project. And so we do have a very standard in what we typically do when we develop a subdivision, and that is to put a small portion of those to remain as rental. And the reason we do that is because you can't control some people's access in and out, not access, but availability to stay in the home. Sometimes they get moved to new jobs. Sometimes they are service members and get deployed overseas. And this gives them the ability to do that. However, in 163 units, only 10% or 16 units is what our request is for that rental product. And again, that's just for convenience. Our building partners here, we're the developer. NVR will be the builder if we're successful, and their goal is to sell these fee simple also. I'm sorry, it's not moving forward. There we go. Okay, so this kind of marks out the delineation between the rear-loaded and the front-loaded product. The rear-loaded are, again, alley-loaded products, and those are outlined in red. And then the front-loaded are shown in blue. As you can see, we do have a small section that are front-loaded that are near the front. And the purpose of that is so that they can, that the garage, none of our garages are readily visible from Noonan Crossing Bypass. So that was one of the questions that the councilman asked earlier, is to, you know, some of those are closer and some of those will have noise. However, we'll have an extensive landscape plan along that frontage so that we provide as much, not only noise reduction, but also any kind of visibility into the site. That'll be, it'll be more of the constructive, our goal is to landscape this thing and really make it look nice. This is, this is a general, the tree management plan, the kind of a preliminary tree management plan is what we called it. And as you can see, we have an extensive amount of planting along the Noonan Crossing Bypass. And then on the rear side of it, we do not cross over the creek and move into that area that's dry adjacent to Interstate 85. There are a number of reasons, and one of the reasons is just the cost to develop that, to develop either a culvert or a bridge to get over that creek and access that property is indeed cumbersome. And so we avoided that area. And so provides a large buffer for the interstate. The next slide is the same slide you all were looking at. This is a slide that was asked for us to bring in, just to show exactly what the breakdown of these units are when we are providing the treatment that was requested in the last meeting. And so the ones that are highlighted in yellow are going to be all brick, so they all receive that treatment that the front would get. The ones that are, that is shown in purple will have a side and front of brick. And then the ones that are orange, and again, you can see you're stepping further away from Noonan Crossing Bypass. Those will be front brick, and then we'll have a, really a three-foot water table to run along those sides. And so we had a nice, we had our landscape architects come and present or develop some images of what the entrances will look like, what it will look like from Noonan Crossing. And so the one in the top left is a view into the entrance. And then we scaled it back a little bit and showed the same view. And what the goal is here is to just show the amount of landscaping that we intend to put into this project.
Could I interrupt a minute? Talking about the tree management and the landscaping there?
Yeah.
I'm looking like, you know, 20 years down the road. And to be simple, you know, people want to put the fences all the way right up to the road, or as far as they can, and don't, or don't maintain those trees along the bypass there, and it kind of can become an eyesore. Would you be willing to proffer a, that they maintain trees and the landscaping? So it keeps that visual buffer and also a sound buffer for them?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. We, that property adjacent to the road along that front will be owned by the Property Owners Association, not by individual homeowners. So the lot size that we're, that we're showing in there is really not, the amount of fencing they could put in there is really limited. Well, that open space in there would be owned by the Property Owners Association and maintained by them. So they would have a requirement to do that.
Okay, so it would be a requirement that they would maintain it perpetually?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, yes, sir.
Trees and everything?
Yes, sir. The next slide is the amenity area, kind of an aerial view of the amenities. And the goal here is to show that, the goal is to build a, an amenity package that provides use for the homeowners. The homeowner, obviously, you're the townhome development. You don't have as much of a backyard as you would in a residential area, or a single-family residential area. And so what we did here is provide space that had a swimming pool, cabana, restrooms. And then in this one, we showed the, some additional open space in there that can be used for a lot of different purposes. And then, as I mentioned, NVR is here to talk about the architecture. What we provided is a few slides that showed the general architecture of these buildings. These are the rear-loaded units. And I also have a slide of the front-loaded units. And then there's the view of the property itself, of what it would look like. And this is the one that shows the full treatment on all four sides of the units that are closest to Noonan Crossing Bypass. And then as you go back further, you can see, well, it's fairly hard to see, but you can see that the treatment changes as you go into the project. And then I'm available for questions.
Any questions of the applicant?
I have one question, Mayor. I noticed he said phase one, phase two. Phase one will be 80 units, phase two is 83. With the proffered condition of 10%, my understanding is 10% of whatever homes are completed, correct?
Yes, sir.
So if, for some reason, something happens, you don't continue with the phase two, then whatever's completed, that's, you take it to 10%.
Yes, sir. The covenants will be recorded, if the, I'm not sure how the city process works on recording our covenants, but we typically record them ahead of the, of the final approval, along with the city's okay with that. Then those will be recorded prior to the first unit going vertical.
Okay, I just want to make it clear. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions, the applicant?
I do. I have another question. Based on the units, the number of units, I don't know, you know, assume, you know, kind of guessing the road, road widths and stuff like that, you know, standard road widths and stuff like that. Adequate parking, it's been a problem in some of our other neighborhoods. People want to park on the road, or there's guests, or holidays, or whatever, and people are parking on the road. Would there be, would you be willing to put up the street signage, you know, with the city road signage to not allow parking for the, I'm thinking of garbage days, for the garbage truck to come through and get the garbage cans out on the road? And that can become, like I said, become an issue in some other neighborhoods.
I'd be willing to. One thing we've done in the past when it comes to some jurisdictions, also in some places where the roads, so this is going to be a very standard road, as you mentioned. But on the side of the, on the side where the fire hydrants are, they will put up no parking signs. That's something we'd be willing to do. That way, it's on one side of the road. It allows that free flow of traffic on the other. It's pretty, it's a, it's a, something that has worked in other, in other projects where this has kind of come up in the past.
Because even on standard-sized roads, sometimes it becomes an issue with a large garbage truck.
Yes, sir.
You know, even just getting access to the cans because people are parked.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think we'd be careful if we start putting these types of restrictions on it's, I mean, I can speak from personal experience in our particular neighborhood. Nobody reads those signs, or does they adhere to them? So, I mean, who's going to enforce it and how are we going to do it? That's my.
They're city signs. It's a city street, so the city puts the signs up and.
Right, I get that.
Police force is charged with enforcing those signs, so. Reads them, who doesn't read them, where the police are.
Yes, exactly. So it's hard to enforce, but it's.
It's all part of the, yeah, exactly. Any other questions, the applicant? Thank you very much. This is an opportunity for anyone opposed to this project to come forward to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council to adopt the planning commission report and recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, we adopt the planning commission's report and recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor by saying aye. Opposed, like sign? Motion carried. Thank you. The next item would be, at council's pleasure, a motion to rezon.
It's my pleasure to adjourn, yeah.
Do we have executive session?
They said rezone.
Oh, rezoned. Oh, I thought you said resign.
Rezone.
We do, but not until we dispense with this matter. Is there a motion to rezon?
A rezon, yes, yes. I'll make that motion.
Second to the conditions?
With the 12, with the 12 conditions. I believe there were 12, correct?
Correct.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion or further questions? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two, okay, so a five-two in favor passes. Okay. Ms. Sears, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, five-two. All right, the next item on the agenda actually is an executive session that we have for personnel and for legal. If Mayor Protem Corritco will read us that motion, that would be great.
As soon as I can figure out how to get to it on this pad. It's not in, oh, here it is. Never mind. I got the paper copy. All right, thank you, Mr. May. Here. I move that we now move, now enter into closed session as allowed by OCGA Section 50, Tac 14, Tac 4, pursuant to advice by the city attorney, purpose of discussing legal and personnel, and that we, in open session, adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA Section 50, Tac 14, Tac 4, and that this body ratified the actions of the council taken in closed session and confirmed that the subject matters of the closed session were within exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second. We enter into executive session for personnel and legal. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carried. We're in executive session. Thank you for being here today.
We're asking if I have an exception to the call.
Sure.